All right, I got to call the Financial Law Subcommittee meeting to order. It's Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020. And let's do a roll call. Mr. Souza?
Present.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
And I'm also present, Mr. Martin. We have no student activity requests. You're going to have to excuse me because allergies are cutting in every other word I say. Student activity requests, there aren't any. Next item on the agenda is bills payable in the amount of $401,239.62. Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brenda, how are you this evening?
I'm great, thank you. How are you?
Good, thank you. Page one at the top, Bye County Collaborative. Now, that's $108,000. Now, do we have students going there under this COVID situation? Or how is, what do they do there? And just tell me about that payment as best you can. Thank you.
Absolutely. These are some of the, it is for seven students that we have in out-of-district at the Bye County Collaborative. And yes, they have, they are still providing services for us students. So that is the reason why we are still paying the out-of-district collaborative. And this is not a residential one. This is one that a student does, is participating in education remotely, just like our students are as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just don't remember that many students going there. It changes, it changes all the time. So, you know, I just wanted to check in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Is there a motion to?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the bills payable warrant in the amount of $401,239.62.
I'll second it. I'll say it's a lot easier to read with kids learning remotely instead of in school.
Okay, Mr. Souza, roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
And I'll also vote yes. Last item on the agenda is facilities update. Ms. Monahan, maybe you want to give us a brief facilities update?
Absolutely. Today was the last day that we had ownership of Mokee Elementary School. So today, we emptied out the elementary school for the past few weeks and the keys were handed over to construction. I would like to say thank you very much to Principal Katie Decuta, Assistant Principal Claudia Nichols, Storekeepers Peter Farina and Assistant Storekeeper Nick DeCosta, the Mokee Custodians Francisco Ribora, Manny Rivers, and Ed Laughin, and of course, all of the Mokee teachers that went into the school and packed up their classroom one last time, of course, earlier than they ever expected. But it was a huge effort, a huge team effort. And we want to thank everyone involved for all of their hard work and dedication to us and to our students.
Any further comments? I just want to make an addition to my roll call. I had Ms. Monahan and Mr. Cabral also in attendance. I just want to, I just want them to be recognized that they were part of this Financial Law Subcommittee meeting. So, facilities update, we got it on Mokee School. Anything else to go to the order?
Oh, we're good, thank you.
Mr. Fiore or Mr. Souza?
I'm going adjourned.
Second.
Motion has been made to adjourn and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
And Mr. Martin votes yes also. So we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Certainly. Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Palowski? He's not there?
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Fiore?
Here.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mrs. Almeida?
Present.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mr. Souza?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Presence, thank you.
Would you like the prayer now?
Yes, please.
Certainly. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for the opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, approval of the minutes of May 20th, 2020.
What approval?
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Yes.
I have a meeting.
Okay, I'll say, Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, Jim Quaintance from the Titan Education Association has asked to address you this evening. There's nothing in the, there's no mechanism for that right now. So what is the wishes of the committee?
Motion to suspend the rules. We have to suspend the rules, Mr. Chairman, because it's not on the agenda. But I'd go ahead and vote approval for that.
You're a second.
Suspend the rules.
Motion, motion made and seconded on discussion, Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this regarding FY21 budget?
I'm assuming it is, yes.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I move to postpone the FY21 budget presentation due to the fact that I don't find the budget on any website whatsoever, whether it's the city side or the school department side. At 3:00 this afternoon, we were informed that there were some folks who are going to join us. I have no problem with folks joining us, I'm up for full transparency. But limiting access to only a select few is not fair to the constituents that we serve. I looked up our school committee foundation and basic commitment. And it starts with school district legal status. The legal basis for public education in the town is vested in the will of the people as expressed in the Constitution of Massachusetts and the state statutes pertaining to education. We represent, what was the population, 50-some-odd thousand? And having access to 100 people on Zoom is not fair to our constituents. I move a motion to postpone.
Madam Mayor, there's a motion, Greg, I don't, Greg, I don't mind you doing that after the motion has been, but there's a motion on the floor and the discussion is the motion on the floor. And Greg, I have no problem with you discussing that in the next thing, I have no problem with that.
Okay, I apologize, that's why I asked.
Yeah, yeah, let's get to this motion, we'll go to the next. Madam Mayor, we just need to vote on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. I see that Mrs. Almeida has a comment.
Thank you. On the motion, I suspended the rules to allow public input.
Okay, so, seconded on a roll call.
We don't know what public input is going to be. So the motion is for public input, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so, can we have the roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan?
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. DeMello?
On discussion. Mayor, I'm an avid listener and viewer to town and city council meetings. And usually, there's public input, there's a telephone access for the public at large. And I think that's, once again, only fair to the entire constituents that we serve.
Okay, so there's.
If you don't have a mechanism in place.
Thank you.
It's a problem.
Well, point of information on that, the city council is streamed live. We're not streamed live, we're recorded. There's a difference.
When we have a hearing, we advertise because we're required to have public input for those hearings. So it is a little bit of a different situation. You have folks invited, that you can invite them to have public input. It's up to you folks how you want to vote on it. There is a motion on the floor. Mr. DeMello?
On discussion, Mayor, thank you. I did have one constituent reach out to me yesterday regarding exactly what we're discussing right now. My email, I can read it verbatim, was specifically stating that we have no access at this time to allow any public interaction. And I can't wait to get back into our regular meeting setting so we can have a table that we can sit around with and have people and live interaction like we have in the past. So I can share that email with you. It was drafted yesterday as a response to a constituent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote on the motion? Mrs. Fagan?
Yes. Ms. Dougherty?
So the motion is to allow public input. I vote yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
No.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
No.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
And I don't think you have to vote, Madam Mayor. Do we have enough?
We do.
Okay.
There's two days, the motion passes.
Okay.
Mr. Souza?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Jim, you have the floor for five minutes, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, School Committee. Thank you, Chairman. Good evening. I understand that currently we are in unprecedented situation. In just a matter of a couple of months, the financial outlook for the school district, the city, the state, and the entire country has been dramatic, has had a dramatic turn for the worse. What was supposed to be a joyous time for us with the passing of the Student Opportunity Act has become a time where difficult decisions need to be made. We recognize that there are still several uncertainties ahead of us and there may be more difficult decisions to be made down the road. Your job tonight, though it may be necessary, is certainly not an easy one. We urge you to keep in mind that all Unit A members and all school employees make a valuable contribution to our schools. We hope that you will ensure all possible options and explore all possible options in order to, at the very least, reduce the number of positions that are eliminated. I also understand that one of the options being presented tonight is a salary freeze for all employees for the 2021 school year. This will have endless negative ripples that will affect all of us for a long time way into retirement. Please remember that any changes to the collective bargaining agreement need to be negotiated and ratified by our members of the body. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Quaintance. Okay, so do we need to excuse the guests or? Okay, moving on then to the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for my update, I will be brief. I thought it would be appropriate, in light of recent events taking place throughout our region, throughout our state, and also throughout our country, I thought it would be appropriate to share with the public the community letter that I distributed yesterday regarding the demonstrations taking place throughout our nation. So, dear Taunton School Community, today I write to you on a matter that is not related to COVID-19, remote learning, grading, or budget. Although these are essential topics that we will continue to revisit in the days, weeks, and months ahead, I feel compelled to discuss the current state of our nation. Many of us are experiencing a wide range of emotions. It is inconceivable for us to comprehend how a fellow human can act in such a deliberate manner resulting in the death of another. The death of George Floyd and the resulting response to it serves as the sobering reminder to how far we still have to grow as a country in our culturally responsive practices. The repeated instances of violence and mistreatment of African-Americans is a stain on our society. As both an educator and a father, I am committed to continuing to tackle the important issues involved with implicit bias, equity, and social justice so as to create a better world for all our children. We're working collaboratively as community, as we always have done in time. I believe we can continue to address the inequities that tarnish our society. I am proud to be the superintendent of a school system comprised of strong and intelligent students from varying social and economic backgrounds. I believe our diversity to be one of the greatest strengths and I feel our different backgrounds and experiences will better prepare our students to be productive members of society. We must continue to embrace our differences and strive to have honest conversations respectfully on topics such as injustice, racism, and inequality that impacts our community. I am also cognizant of the full range of emotions our students must be feeling at this time. Our students need us more than they ever have before. As educators, we play a crucial role in helping students to process such events while also providing a sense of comfort and a place for educational learning, discussion, and social growth and development. The circumstances of our current school closure deny us the ability to reflect on these difficult situations face-to-face with our students. In addition, we are not able to provide our students with a natural setting to appropriately discuss with their peers and classmates the event that are currently unfolding. Time and again, we are reminded that despite all the received gains we have made as a society, intolerance and discrimination continue to exist. This is not the world any of us want for our children. In closing, I ask everyone to take a moment to reflect on the role you will play in helping to make positive changes you wish to see in our society. I encourage you to express your feelings in respectful, peaceful, nonviolent ways and to refrain from taking actions that could incite further discord. Acts of mayhem will only serve to distract from the focus on the fundamental changes needed to move our nation forward. I am reminded of a famous quote by Margaret Mead, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever does." As global citizens, we will play a role in creating a better world, a world that I believe will be filled with kindness and free of inequality. This future that I envision for our students is one I believe can become a reality for them. No matter who you are or where you come from, we can all work together to make the long-lasting changes we wish to see in our world. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
Motion, we accept the report.
Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mrs. Dougherty?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. I just, I just want to briefly commend the superintendent for stepping out to write such a heartfelt missive to the community, to our students, and to our staff. This is such a, such an important issue, as you have stated. And it's important for the school committee to follow the leadership of the superintendent in this regard. One of the most critical things is to provide the pathway for our staff to work with our students around their confusion and questions in this regard. So thank you very much for doing that, and you should be commended. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to D, the FY21.
Motion.
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. So there was a motion made and seconded on a roll call, Mrs. Fagan, please.
Yes. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, now on to the FY21 budget update, Mr. Cabral.
One second, Madam Mayor, I'm just gonna get the.
You see, Mr. DeMello has his hand up, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see everyone right now. Let me just, who has their hand up?
Greg.
Greg, I'm sorry. Mr. DeMello?
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to move a motion to postpone tonight's FY21 budget update by the superintendent. And my reason is, is that there is no public information on the school committee website or the city of Taunton website that folks can actually view. And I know there's a limited amount of access points at the setup that we have now. I think it's limited to 100 participants. And I think that that should be expanded to include the total 55,000-plus citizens that would want to participate. Again, this is about transparency. I stand with the union representation that's here before us tonight. I was with them on buses to Boston to support the Student Opportunity Act. I'm a card-carrying member of the MTA myself. And I think this is about transparency to the public at large. And without access points, this presentation should be postponed. That's my motion, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Just one minute, I just need to be able to see everyone. Is anyone else raising a hand? I'm sorry, I can't see everyone at once right now.
I'll deactivate the stop share, Madam Mayor, until the presenting.
Okay, gotcha.
There's no discussion unless there's a.
Well, there's a motion on the floor. Mr. Fiore has a comment, we'll let him comment. I don't think there's been a second.
If there's no section, second, there's no discussion.
Second.
Good point. Thank you. Okay. Now there's discussion. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are we still going to have a formal budget hearing after this? Is this only a presentation and we have the public hearing later?
Correct, Mr. Fiore. We will still have a budget hearing and then we still need to go before the city council.
Right, because that's where I think the public needs to be involved. This is really our working on a presentation to go to them ultimately.
Mrs. Dougherty?
Yes, I see that while I respect Mr. DeMello's motion and understand what you're saying very clearly, I think that I see this conversation as like a budget workshop. If we were in a committee of the whole format, we would be having a discussion, asking questions. And as I understand it, the intention is not to entertain any motions tonight, to take any action on what is presented to us, but to gather information about what all of this means to us so that at our subsequent meeting, we would then take up the issues that would be required of us in order to put this budget in order. Is that a correct assumption, Superintendent? And David, too?
Yes, Mrs. Dougherty.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor and second, Mr. Martin?
I would agree with what Mrs. Dougherty just said. I have no intentions on making any votes to any of those options that are on that last page. This is a preliminary meeting to discuss the issues that are on the table. And that's all I feel it is, it's preliminary. And at some point in time, when decisions are made, certainly the public is going to be notified well in advance as to what's going on.
And I'll just remind everyone that Governor Baker has issued an order that allows meetings to be attended via technology as long as you give public access at some point, either through live stream or through recording it and posting it so that they can look at it. Mr. DeMello?
As an amendment to my motion, if that's appropriate this time, I'd like to have this televised or broadcast via Facebook Live. This way, we have no issues with access points.
Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you. I understand the concerns of Mr. DeMello and I respectively kind of disagree with him. We posted our agenda at City Hall and on the agenda it says we're going to do an FY21 budget update. This is only an update, this isn't anything we're really voting on. I mean, we did have given some different scenarios and those kinds of things. But the longer we put this off, the less time we're going to have to really discuss things. We don't have that many weeks left. We have to come up with a budget before June 30th. We're already in June 3rd. We have three more meetings before we can really vote on a budget. We should listen to what the superintendent has to say today, ask our questions, have them come back, and then vote on it at another time. We're not going to really vote on anything right now, so, and it's already on the agenda.
Okay. I think, well, excuse me? I think the points have been made well and now they're being remade. So is everyone ready to vote on the motion? Mrs. Fagan, roll call, please. Oh, all right, one more, Mr. Martin?
Just for the record, can we hear what the motion is again?
Yes, the motion is to postpone the budget presentation. And actually, Mr. DeMello just made an amendment to this motion to report it, do Facebook Live. Mrs. Fagan?
Yes. Mrs. Dougherty?
No.
Mr. Palowski?
No.
Mr. Fiore?
No.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Mr. Martin?
No.
Mrs. Almeida?
No.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
No.
All set.
The motion passes. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cabral?
The motion doesn't pass.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. I did it backwards, yes.
Just a question. I'm sorry. Just a question, excuse me, a question in terms of broadcast. There is a continued question about whether or not it's possible for us to present these meetings live. So maybe, and perhaps today isn't the day, but we should get an update on the reason, on the progress that we're making in that regard or the reasons why we cannot do that.
Madam Mayor, I got a quick response to that. I actually investigated this.
Mr. Souza?
Thank you. Mr. Jakes has got some of the hardware and software in, there's a little bit more to go. He's hoping to test that the beginning of August. And because he's got personal leave time, so he's going to take that and is hoping to test at the beginning of August. And the goal is, the first meeting is September, we will be live, live, live.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. DeMello's suggestion of Facebook Live is a good one because that doesn't require any significant technology and that provides an opportunity for viewers to put text messages on the site so we can actually receive hearing evidence from people directly.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. Okay, Mr. Cabral? I'm sorry, Mrs. Fagan, did you just.
Just want a quick comment. Before, before we started this meeting, I heard Mr. Jakes talk about he's going to upload it onto Facebook as soon as he can. And I'm sure, I'm not the only person on that committee that got phone calls. I'm sure the community is very aware about what is going on, that there might be budget cuts. And I'm sure all of you received as many phone calls as I did regarding certain personnel that they don't want to see gone and every other thing or program. So I think enough people know, but I think we have to get moving on this. Thank you, Mayor O'Connell.
Thank you. Cabral? Oh, you're on mute right now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to minimize my screen so I only, I cannot see if anyone has a hand up or anyone asked a question. So I apologize, so I'll get us, I'll get us through the presentation. So I just want to spend some time on this slide real quick. We already covered this in our previous, previous presentation. So on May 6th, 2020, the following information and the budget scenarios were discussed with the school committee. Much has not changed regarding the outlook for fiscal '21. Municipalities and school systems continue to struggle formulating their budget without clear, without a clear timeline or information regarding potential impact on Chapter 70 funding. So the three scenarios that we were provided about a month ago, or earlier or later, was regarding a scenario one, where we would receive the FY20 appropriation plus any increase to Chapter 70. In FY20 appropriation, minus 5% plus the Chapter 70 increase. And then also the FY20, FY20 appropriation minus 10% plus the Chapter 70 increase. And at that time, the Chapter 70 increase that the governor had provided in his budget was 3.5, 3.7 million if you include the charter school reimbursement that we would be entitled to as well. So again, not knowing what that Chapter 70 increase figure is, the city has committed this year's appropriation, which is 88.2. And obviously, we will continue to work with the city once we have a clearer picture on the state financial picture as well as the city's financial picture to see if anything can be done or what can be done regarding the Chapter 70 increase that we have received in the past in addition to the previous year's appropriation. So again, a lot is uncertain. I spoke with a superintendent today from a neighboring town. They had to. They had to reduce their budget substantially and actually delivered a large number of layoff notices today. So it's not something that is going to be unique only to Taunton. This is something that communities throughout the Commonwealth will be struggling with. So timeline has really not changed based on the meeting we have with Commissioner Riley yesterday, Bill Bell, and Jay Sullivan, who are the financial experts for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I mean, by all accounts, it appears the state is going to open with a 112 budget until there is better figures or more accuracy regarding the loss of revenue to the state as well as what revenue will look like for the upcoming fiscal year. So again, under normal conditions, we would have expected a $3.5 million increase in Chapter 70 plus the charter school reimbursement, which was just under $200,000. So that's where that $3.7 million figure comes from that you've heard me use a few times. So what I did is I provided you with a little update. On the bottom, you'll notice my notes. So much uncertainty still remains regarding the amount of Chapter 78. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has discussed the following scenarios. This has come from Desi, again, Jay Sullivan, and Mr. Bell regarding some different scenarios. So I think during public input, we heard the much excitement and enthusiasm that the Student Opportunity Act. So one of the scenarios that the state has mentioned is that they may not be able to fund the Student Opportunity Act. So if that was the case, one scenario would be to use the rates, the per FY20 plus the inflation factors. And the inflation factor is 1.99%. So if you were to take the FY20 rates from FY20 and increase that by 1.99%, our Chapter 70 increase would be just under $2.8 million. So you see, that is about an $800,000, $900,000 loss to what we would expect under the governor's budget. The other possibility or scenario that the state has mentioned is a 20% reduction to Chapter 70. So if you were to reduce to 3.5 million by 20%, that would result in a Chapter 70 total of about 2.9, just under $2.9 million. In the worst-case scenario that we've heard would be a reduction in Chapter 78 by 30%, which would be just over $2.5 million. So we expect, or I would hope, that depending on what takes at the state level, again, there's still so much uncertainty and there's no timeline, that a Chapter 78, Chapter 78 to the city of Taunton to the school department would be somewhere between $2.5, $2.8 million. And again, if there is a way to fully fund the governor's preliminary budget, the House One budget, we would receive an increase of $3.5 million. And obviously, I would work very closely and advocate that the school department receive its share in addition to the 88.2. So that is something that, again, is still fluid and ongoing. And we hope in the days, weeks, and months to come that we will see some relief or some additional funding to help offset some of the different decisions we'll be facing in weeks to come. Again, these are the rates. So if you're asking where these rates come from, so this is the administration line we receive. So if you were to divide the full-day kindergarten students for $5.88 by the $4.8 million, that's the total amount that we receive per student. So this is the FY21 rates that we are receiving or the funding that we're receiving. If you back out the Student Opportunity Act, that would result in it's just under $2.8 million coming to the city of Taunton to education. Again, the required net school spending, Taunton receives 65% of its funding from the state and the local, I'm sorry, 65% from the state. And the city's required contribution is 35%. And again, that 35% does include indirect costs, which are the services that the city provides with the school department. So for example, retiree health insurance, health insurance is factored into that 37.3. We can also, again, to process the checks and the payrolls for all our employees through the treasurer's office, that is assessed as part of the indirect cost and makes up this 37.3 million dollar figure. And again, you've seen this before, so I won't bore you with the details. But I think it's important just to remind everyone that, again, unlike some towns where they've already set their budgets because the town managers have already know what they're receiving, because they, some of the smaller towns that border us only receive 18.5% from the state, whereas we are receiving 65%. And some of your poorer communities get as much as 80% from the state. So again, Taunton's share from the state is 65%. And then the rest is made up, as I described or as I discussed, through indirect costs and also funding that the city contributes to our appropriation. So the big question that many will be asking, so appropriation is 88.2 and we do not receive any additional funding, how does that impact net school spending? So what you'll notice here is the required net school spending is $105.4 million. Our indirect costs would be the total of transportation, 8.7, plus that 18.1 million dollar figure. So if you're, we just use round numbers, 18.2 million plus 8.7 million would be 26.9 million. So the city submitted $26.9 million worth of indirect costs. However, transportation and crossing guards do not count. So you'd have to back out transportation and crossing guards, and that's where we get the $8.7 million. So when you back out the $8.7 million, the eligible indirect cost is 18.2. Again, I'm rounding that number. So you subtract the 18.2 from the 105.4. That's where we get the required net school spending, which is 87.2. So for the city to be at 100% net school spending, we need an appropriation at a minimum of 87.2. What the city has stated is that they will contribute 88.2 to education, which is a little more than a million dollars more than what they are required to by law. Again, required to by law. And that puts them at 101% net school spending. Any additional dollars that the city contributes to education will increase that percentage. So for every $800,000 roughly, the city increases by a percent. So if the city contributes 1.6 million, that figure will go up to 103%. So if we're just trying to calculate how additional dollars would impact. And I don't, I won't get into what the previous year, the previous year's net school spending was because we can, that can be debated because it was impacted by retiree health insurance. And I believe at the last presentation, I discussed how retiree health insurance has ended. So unless new dollars are contributed to our appropriation, I think at the last meeting I stated that we'll continue to see a backslide. And in this case, we do see a backslide. And I think in all fairness to a number of towns throughout the Commonwealth, we're going to see a lot of towns, a lot of cities begin to backslide until we know, again, what the local municipality revenues look like and until we know what the state revenue looks like. So at this point, the city is meeting its obligation. And again, I would advocate and argue that any additional dollars in Chapter 70 should be made available or should come over to the school side. But again, that's a discussion to be had by myself, the mayor, the budget manager for the city, and Mrs. Moynihan. So we are proposing expenditures in the amount of 97, under 97 million. And then that $96 million figure you see there does reflect the CARES Act. So I will get into a little detail when we talk about the line item budget, that we did charge about $1 million of the CARES Act to offset our line item budget. So that number was decreased. And when the city provides us with the appropriation of 88.2 and the revenue projections, I decreased. And I'll explain why we decreased the revenue projections. So again, until we know a true figure on what the revenue is going to look like, we were anticipating circuit breaker coming in at 3.6 if fully funded. We are hearing from Jay Sullivan that it may not be fully funded. So we heard a 20% reduction in circuit breaker, which reduces the 3.6 to 2.880. We also know that under the Student Opportunity Act, we were going to be reimbursed 25% of the transportation costs to send our students out of districts. But by law, the transportation reimbursement would only take place once circuit breaker tuition has been fully reimbursed. So if I'm reading the tea leaves, if we're seeing a reduction of 20% to circuit breaker and it's going to be, we're going to lose about $800,000, that means the state will most likely not have funding to reimburse transportation. So that $600,000 that was on the previous presentation has also been removed. There is movement by many superintendents, business managers, and also senators and members of the House of Representatives to advocating that circuit breaker not be held, that circuit breaker be held home. And I will be joining that group and I would encourage members of the school committee to join that group as well, urging that circuit breaker be not held home because that impacts our neediest learners. So if you eliminate the $600,000 that we were anticipating for transportation on the circuit breaker and you reduce circuit breaker by 20%, that leaves our projected revenue at $4.6 million. Therefore, we have a variance of just under $3.9 million. The CARES Act, which I mentioned earlier, the CARES Act funding, we received $2 million in the piece here regarding category COVID-related. This is, these are salaries, supplies, contracted services, and maintenance that we are taking or charging, applying to the CARES Act and removing from the line item budget. Plus, we still had an additional $150,000 that I applied to supplies and we applied to maintenance, knowing that there will be some additional costs that we'll have to pick up. So about $1,050,000 is coming off our line item budget due to the CARES Act. And 150 was added to supply, 75 was added to supplies, and 75 was added to maintenance. So that's where we get a total of $1.2 million. By all accounts, we need to be prepared for remote learning or some type of hybrid blended remote. Require an additional purchase of Chromebooks. And we'll also require the purchase of laptops for our teachers to deliver a blend or to deliver full remote learning. So in order to outfit our teachers' laptops into purchase the 1,500 additional Chromebooks we would need to go fully one-to-one, that would be a purchase of $680,000. Again, that would be charged to the CARES Act. We are also planning for summer school learning, whether it be in-person or remote. And one of the platforms we would look at would be to purchase a curriculum or an online platform in order to deliver full remote learning. I did put an asterisk because there is a grant that we will be applying for, a summer school grant. So that may free up an additional $66,000 that we would move up into the supplies, maintenance, or contracted services. So again, I want to make it clear that we plan to apply for a grant to cover the cost of a platform that we would utilize for remote learning. And that platform would also be available during the school year should it be needed. And I won't bore you with all the details regarding proportionate share. But under the CARES Act, we are required to share funding with our parochial schools. And so based on Our Lady of Lourdes' recent enrollment, last enrollment effective March 13, we plugged that number in and they would be allocated or allowed, but they would receive a portion of that money, which would be about $66,000. So that is how we plan to utilize the CARES funding. I would recommend that if the school committee agrees with our technology purchase, that there be a motion to pursue this purchase. As the longer we delay, the devices may be on backhaul order, which may impact our ability to do some type of blended learning or go one-to-one in the fall. So if there was any motions made tonight, I would advocate that this would be the motion that made the most sense.
Recommendation to purchase the Chromebooks.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? You can use the chat to let me know.
I can deactivate the share. That helps, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I thought there were no votes being taken tonight on discussion on the presentation of the budget. That was clearly indicated by one of the members. I can't remember which one.
Yeah, I would just state, Mr. DeMello, correct, on the line item budget, this motion does not impact the line item budget because it would be utilization of the CARES funding.
Mr. Martin?
I was one of the people that said there'd be no motions. My intent was there'd be no motions on option one or option two. This money is coming to us. We need those materials. I'm sure other people are buying those materials, so we need to get them as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fiori, Mrs. Doherty, Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe the situation with Chromebooks is critical, particularly if we have either remote learning or what I think is more likely is blended learning, where some is going to be remote and some is in the classroom. We were able to equip everybody in the high school and middle school. The elementary schools were short on Chromebooks. And I think there's going to be a tremendous need to get those, to say nothing of repair and replacement of existing ones. So I think this is a critical item that really goes beyond the scope of the budget.
Thank you. Mrs. Doherty?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question about the rest of the COVID-related proposals. Do you need a motion to submit these categories of need, the 1.2 million?
I do not need a motion.
So you go ahead and submit.
I do not need a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is time-sensitive. Especially, we need to get the elementary kids up to speed. There's going to be a hybrid learning or remote learning. And it's just a question for the superintendent. So we can use the money on FY20 and FY21? Is that right on the CARES Act?
Correct, Mr. Souza. So the CARES Act does allow us to to apply, to use the funding now or effective March 13 for any costs incurred, or we can actually use the funding effective July 1st?
So we can put a purchase order in tomorrow then for this? You don't have to wait till July 1?
Correct. We can put a purchase order in ASAP.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, ready to vote on the motion then? Was it seconded? I'm sorry.
I seconded it.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so Mrs. Fagan, if you could do the roll call?
Certainly. Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Pulowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
All set.
Thank you.
unanimous. Thank you.
Motion passes. Okay. Mr. Cabral, I don't know if you're talking, but...
Sorry. Sorry, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that catch. So this slide, again, just to show that our fixed cost increase, so salary, against steps and increases that were negotiated. And again, I want to reiterate and emphasize that staff are not, we did not negotiate 3.5% increases for our employees. And there are many different factors that get accounted into that, such as step increases as well as the percentage in other areas that we increased, again, because of budgeting purposes. For example, coverage pay, sickly buyback, and other obligations that we have are pre-negotiated contract language. Special education tuition, you see, increased by nearly 3%. Transportation increased by 5%. Utilities, a modest 2% increase. And we reduced contracted services, supplies, and maintenance. So overall, the proposed expenditures equal to about 2.3%, which is about half of what the increase was last year. Again, to give you a little track record or a history of what our budget has increased since fiscal '15, we've had some years of growth and we can... We've had some years of growth, and we can attribute the FY fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, we can attribute that growth due to the work this group made or committed, many of this, many on this group committed to as far as expanding our CVTE programs. As we remember, that resulted in additional dollars to the school system. It was about an extra five thousand dollars for every high school student enrolled in the CVTE program. And then once that began to level out, then you saw, again, still healthy increases, nearly four percent, three and a half percent again last year, five percent when we saw the governor begin to make adjustments to align with the Opportunity Act. Again, there was a lot of movement and there was a lot of lobbying last year to increase funding to education. So that's why you see a five percent increase there. And unfortunately, this year, you see that, lowest since I've been a business manager, assistant superintendent in the town public schools, two point three percent. The net school spending chart, again, I'll just spend some time just to show. Again, there were some lean years from FY thirteen to FY sixteen, the city was under a hundred percent. And then when you saw retiree health insurance begin to factor in, you see the increase, you see the spike. And unfortunately, due to the current situation that we are under due to COVID nineteen and not knowing the timeline for the budget and not knowing what the revenue projections will be or the shortfall will be, you see about almost a six percent drop in net school spending. And I know you like to ask what the state averages, some of you on the committee, the state average is about a hundred and twenty-eight percent net school spending. And again, just want to put this again. We've always said that the town public schools of the city of Totten gets a lot of value for the education that we help provide our students by maximizing our dollars. So forty-three percent is of the city's operational budget is spent on education. But there are two other schools that will count for that eighty-eight point one million, which is that big blue piece of the pie. Totten receives, top public schools receives ninety-five percent, Bristol Plymouth accounts for about four percent. And Bristol County Agricultural High School is just under one percent, but we rounded it up to one. So I would hope and expect that these percentages moving forward would look very similar next year and the year to come, despite the COVID nineteen impact on our community and the state. Because, because again, everybody is being impacted unfortunately by this. So it's hard to say that one department is benefiting over the other when we're all faced with this difficult situation. And then closing remarks, I know we got a lot to cover and we've already reviewed this in the past, so I won't bore you with the comments that we I've shared. I think it would be probably more prudent to move over to the line item budget. So you can see where we are removing the CARES funding or adding, modifying our line item budget to reflect CARES funding. And then also talking about the different options, you can gain better insight as to the impact these positions or the work that these positions provide in town public schools.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. I see some hands up. Mr. Cabral, are you moving on or?
It's the wishes of the group. Would you like me to answer questions on the PowerPoint or wait till we are done?
PowerPoint.
PowerPoint. So I believe I saw Mrs. Almeida first, and I did see Mrs. Doherty and Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cabral, on the transportation. What if school did not open in September as anticipated? What would the savings there be versus if school does open? And with the new guidelines that are gonna be set with one student per seat and yada yada. What is, is the cost gonna change at all in transportation? Do we need to have more buses or less buses?
Yeah, so we're hearing, based on our call yesterday with the commissioner, we expect to have opening school guidance within the next two weeks is what the commissioner has stated. And what he did say is the CDC guideline that I shared with you last week of twelve to a bus, he does not believe that number will hold. Again, that was guidance, but he believes that number will increase. So we will be able to account for more students on our buses. We just don't know yet. Also, part of our work will be to survey our parents who utilize our transportation to identify those parents who plan to transport their own students and also parents or families who plan to utilize our transportation. So if we are doing a form of blended learning where students are coming into the schools, I would, knowing that we're gonna have fewer students on the buses just because of the guidelines that we expect, I don't anticipate a savings there. I would anticipate a savings if it was full remote. If it was full remote, it would be a savings in transportation because we wouldn't be running our buses.
Okay. Do you think there would be an increase based on not being able to have the same amount of students on the bus?
It would depend. It really would depend, and we may need to restructure how we are transporting students. So that'll be the work of the task force on transportation to to produce that and also to look into that and also produce figures. So we can anticipate any savings or costs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Doherty and then Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor. On slide ten, and then I have a question on the previous slide. I just have a point of clarification, a definition. We've already talked about transportation and Bloomberg Company and the savings that have ensued and that kind of thing. But given that our schools have been closed for several months in utilities, supplies, and maintenance, have there been any reductions in expenditures in this year's budget that would create savings in those line items that could carry over to a subsequent year?
There hasn't been any reduction because we continue to level fund our salary, our supply lines year to year. Our supply lines very rarely get increased. So what we've done in the past is we've pre-bought with previous funds in that current fiscal year to provide us with a savings moving forward. So with three months worth of supplies in our building, so yes, we would need to budget for about seven months worth of supplies. But not knowing what we're gonna need for supplies, Mrs. Doherty, Doherty, I would advocate that we not reduce any of our supply lines because we may need that funding in addition to the CARES Act.
What about utilities and maintenance?
Again, we don't know. If we're closed, we will see a savings there. But if we are open, even if it's a blended approach, our building's gonna be open as if they would be open for all our students. So there'll still be a cost there.
What about savings for this current year, this fiscal year?
Any savings in this fiscal year will be used, will be used to offset any deficits in any line item budgets so that we may preserve our revenue.
And would you, for our next conversation about the budget, bring the amount of savings in those line items? Just so we have a picture of what that means in terms of this fiscal year. So thank you for that. What, what kind of contracted services do we have?
One that comes to mind real quick would be all our copy machines. So copy machines would fall under that. That's a, that's a big contracted service. Let me think about the volume there. Other programs, such as programming, as in some of the programs we're gonna talk about on the line item budget, but for example, that would be one, if we, if we, if we contract for someone to work with our visually impaired students, that would be a contracted service without mentioning names. So we do have a multiple of contracted services as well as programs that we bring into the school system. That would be considered a contracted service.
So it, again, it would be helpful going forward as we're looking, giving this budget close scrutiny to have what those are and how much those cost going forward, if you can do that. If I might go on, Madam Mayor. So I'm looking at slide. Sorry, I'm looking at slide eight and slide seven, just for my own edification. So on slide seven, the required net school spending is one hundred and five point four million. I'm assuming required net school spending is what the state says we should be spending. And then we have on the next page, a proposed expenditure, I'm imagining in the ideal, ninety-six million, ninety-six point seven, seven, eight million that we'd like to have. And then your statement, Mr. Cabral, about what the city is appropriating for us is eighty-eight million. So how do you account for that wide discrepancy? And I hear all about, we don't know what the money is, there's going to be a shortfall and all of that, but there's such a wide discrepancy between the eighty-eight million, the ninety-six million, and the hundred and five million.
Yeah, so I guess what makes that confusing, Mrs. Doherty, is that you're talking about three different numbers.
That's right.
Three, three different items. Okay. So the hundred and five, the hundred and five million dollars would include, think, try to think of it this way, the hundred and five million dollars would include the appropriation of eighty-eight-two, plus all the services, the indirect costs the city provides to town public schools. So that's where you get the eight, the hundred and five. So in order for the city to meet its net school spending requirement, it has to provide a hundred and five million dollars in the form of appropriation or in the form of services to the school department. So retiree health insurance is part of that hundred and five million dollars. The trip, okay. So is that clear enough? Right? And so when you back out the ineligible costs to be at a hundred percent net school spending, we need an appropriation of eighty-seven-two. So the eighty-seven-two meets the city's requirement because when you combine the eighty-seven-two plus the eighteen, one nine seven, it equals a hundred and five million dollars.
So the entire cost of retiree health insurance, I look at your bar graph. We're fully funding retiring health insurance. And so it's because of the deficits in revenue, we're driving down the contribution. So it's just barely over a hundred and one percent. So how much of that hundred and one percent, as you go down by percentage points, equal the retired, retiree health insurance? Is it?
Yeah, retiree health insurance accounts for five, five million dollars is what retiree health insurance costs.
Okay, so.
If you, if you were to back out the retiree health insurance, so again, eight hundred and eighty thousand is one percent. So that would be about a million dollars is a little more than one percent. So if you were to back out the retiree health insurance, now you're talking about a five percent reduction. So you're looking at about ninety-six percent net school spending.
Okay. And again, once again, then that would fall to its previous years, fall below its previous years levels.
Net school, if we were working under the old regulations where we were only assessed three hundred thousand for retiree health insurance, we would be under a hundred percent net school spending.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Doherty. And the committee is certainly welcome to ask questions, but please keep in mind that next week is your budget hearing where you will really get into the details, right? Today is the presentation. So next I have Mrs. Fagan. Did you have a comment, Mrs. Fagan?
Yes, I did. I'm sorry, I had to unmute Madam Mayor. Mr. Cabral, one of the things that concerns me when I look at the budget is when I see all the things that we want to charge off to the CARES Act. How comfortable with you are you with the fact that that money's gonna come here? And what's gonna be the net, I'm sure not getting it's gonna be devastating. So do you have a comfort that? Because I understand revenue is down everywhere.
You can hear me, right? My mute, I'm not muted? Yeah, yes, the two million dollars is coming to the school department. I just need to upload our workbook and that funding will be provided to the school department.
And that's, that's a guarantee. You don't see anybody reneging on that?
No, because I was part of the stimulus, the stimulus bill that was first passed by the federal government.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure because I saw so many of that charged up to that. Is it possible that they can deny some of the things that you're asking for?
There's a lot of flexibility in utilizing the CARES Act. I do plan on attending some webinars with Mrs. Moynihan, just so we don't encounter exactly what you stated, Mrs. Fagan.
Okay, all right. That's what I want to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Superintendent Cabral, so this budget is based on a brick and mortar budget. Is that right? Not remote learning or blended learning or hybrid learning, I should say?
Correct. This is a level service budget. So this pretty much carries over everything we currently have in place in our fiscal twenty budget. As Dr. Croto used to say, there are no squiggly wigglies in this budget.
That's for sure. And so after we do all the hard work between next week, then the potential that it still could be flexible, it's still gonna be flexible moving into the budget, into the fiscal year FY twenty-one, because the state still hasn't had their budget spread away. So if this, if the commissioner comes down with regulations on brick and mortar learning in the school learning, changes it, then that changes the narrative or the conversation.
Correct. And again, there's still so many variables. I mean, let's, let's talk about something that's near and dear to everyone's everyone's heart in the committee, which is athletics. Now, there's still much discussion regarding whether or not we'll be able to have sports in the fall. And that's a reality that we need to discuss and face. So in the event the fall season were to be canceled, now we did budget for a full athletic season from fall, winter, and spring. But if fall sports were to be canceled, there would, there would be, there would be a savings to the school department. So we did plan to return as if everything was status quo.
So this narrative or this conversation could be a continuing conversation even after we have the the reductions or the budget from the state and et cetera.
Correct. And we will be scrutinizing, we will be scrutinizing this budget from start to finish as we work our way through the year and making adjustments depending on what our remote learning plan will look like. And again, based on the latest guidance we received from the state and whether or not we can, again, do something as simple as after-school activities. Will we be allowed to hold after-school activities and what will that look like?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. And Mr. Pulowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. So this, this is my question, trying to wrap my brain around the money that's coming in. So on slide four, you talked about the expected chapter seventy increase. And we expected it to increase by three point five million. So is that where we get the discrepancy between the proposed budget and our actual budget? Because I got to imagine that if we come up with the ninety-six million, that's something that we intended that we would have been able to pay right now. So if we were to get that expected chapter seventy, would we not have the three point nine three point nine million dollar deficit? And then would our net school spending be more like in the hundred and four percent range?
Very good, Mr. Pulowski. So if we did receive the chapter seventy increase and that chapter seventy increase was added on top of the eighty-eight-two the city has committed, now that's eight, sixteen, twenty-four, thirty-two, we would go up just over four percent on net school spending. And we would be looking at a reduction, however, we gotta cut three point eight. We would looking at, be looking at a reduction of about two to three hundred thousand versus four million.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pulowski. Okay, I think moving on, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One second, please. So I will quickly go through the line item budget just to show, you've seen the pie chart before. Again, seventy-four percent of every, seventy-four cents of every dollar we spend is on salaries. Transportation makes about, special education tuition about nine percent, transportation, nine percent, utilities, four percent. Those are all our fixed costs. You notice the fixed costs take up the largest chunk of the pie. The smallest part of the pie that we can control is only about four percent, which would be our contracted services, our supplies, and our maintenance. So again, not a lot of money when you consider that we are a ninety-six million dollar operation. Again, salaries makes up the majority of it. So you'll see in red, those are some of the items that Mrs. Moynihan reduced in order to balance our budget. And just to show you where the CARES was applied, so again, I'm going quickly because I think we want to spend the majority of our time on the options. For example, on the twenty-four twenty instructional equipment, so thinking about some of the PPE equipment we need to purchase for our classroom. So we zeroed out instructional equipment. So we zeroed out instructional equipment, and we're gonna charge all this to the CARES Act in order to make sure our classrooms are retrofitted and ready to begin when we open the school year. Again, you'll notice other instructional services, distance learning, so eighty-two-five, we zeroed that out. If we were to purchase the education platform, our online education platform, a sixty-six thousand using the CARES Act, so we would actually see a savings there. And I think you understand where we're going with instructional technologies, so doing the Chromebook purchase, and then any other purchases we need to do to support our online platform. So we would need to buy a filter to make sure that students, when they're working remotely, are not exploring inappropriate content or sending any messages that are inappropriate. We would have a filter that would pick up on that and alert the principal, alert administration. And then obviously instructional software, you see that listed there as well. So again, as you go through the line item budget, feel free to reach out to me. I expect there will be a lot of conversations, a lot of questions between now and next week. And I do plan to make myself available as much as possible, as well as Mrs. Moynihan, to spend as much time as needed to answer any questions, so that members of the committee are informed. And then on the last slide, I provide you with a couple of options. You know, I want to stress, and I really want to say this, that everyone on this committee, I think we pretty much know the face of the person or the people that are associated with these positions. Being in the school system for twenty-two years, having supervised many of these people, worked closely with many of the people that are listed here. This is not something that we enjoy, this is not something that anyone is taking pleasure in discussing or putting together. We really, really, you know, worked hard, and we gave it a lot of thought, and we really tried to not impact, you know, the people in front of our children. That was the lens that we operated on, that was to not impact people in our classrooms. But all these positions support the people in our classrooms, all the work that takes place in our classrooms. So that's what makes this very, very difficult. So I really want to emphasize that what's on option one, what's on option two, can be interchanged. So you may look at something, or you may have questions regarding why is something on option one? Could we swap it out with something on option two? By all means, that can be done. So I'll just go quickly through my security, through the, through the items, provide you a little bit of background. So security guard impacts the high school, there are six security guards at the high school. So we have, we have a part-time security guard, and then we have a full-time security guard. So the seventeen-four would result in the reduction of maybe half or maybe one and a half security guards at the high school. The copy center clerk, again, that impacts the high school, but it also serves the district. So we would have to rework that. That might, might be something where staff could, would utilize the copy center, or we could, we could possibly look at other ways to provide copies for our districts. But as we continue to go more remote, or we become better with the Chromebooks and online learning in the classroom, as well as outside of the classroom, then we may see a lesser need or less dependency on paper. The art teacher, I believe, is currently a vacant position, so that we would not fill that position. The registrar works at our welcome center. The reason why that was listed is we've seen a lot of success with the online registration portal. The online registration portal allows families to register their students, not only in English, but in other languages. And then that information is sent directly to Mrs. Bill Knows Department, where the student data gets entered. So that was the rationale behind placing that position where, on this list. Coordinator for Business Partnerships and Internships. So this is something that we were, we've been thinking about and how it applies to our CBTE programs. We know that we're gonna need an internship coordinator director, so there may be an opportunity down the road to do something different with that funding. But it is something that, again, does support the town public schools, not only in the CBTE department, for students in other classrooms. Our truancy offices would be something that we would propose reducing. The testing facilitator is a position that is at the high school to support the assistant headmaster when it comes to coordinating the testing at the school, and also supports the guidance department, the chairing team meetings. The music teacher, I believe, is a vacant position, so we would not fill that position. Do, based on the guidance that we're receiving, if we were to open in some kind of a blended or, or half remote, half in-school type model, part of the guidance suggests that students will not be moving from class to class. Therefore, we would not see that, we would not see the libraries being utilized. So we would, that's one of the reasons why we propose reducing that line by ninety-three thousand. Taught and areas school career, this one was a difficult one, because we know they've been ingrained in our DNA for many years, going back, I believe, to sometime in the nineteen-eighties. But again, knowing how things are gonna change in our CBTE department, and knowing that we require an internship director, we were looking at the fifty thousand for the coordinator for Business Partnerships and Internships, as well as the, the funding that we spend for coaching for change, and beginning to, to look at, is this something that we could do in-house or do internally and still see a savings? Coaching for Change, you've heard me speak about the benefits of this program and how it services students after school. So again, not knowing what the future will look like, and whether or not we will be able to hold programs after school, and if we do hold programs after school, it's not gonna look anything like what we're doing now. So that is one of the reasons why it was listed as a potential reduction. The team chairs is something that we brought as a need to the school department, something that would free up our guidance councils to do guidance work. We were in the process of about to make recommendations to hire or fill those positions. Unfortunately, COVID-nineteen took effect, and we made the hard decision to hold off on filling those positions, and we would hold off for another year. So that would reduce, or provide us a savings of three-hundred thousand. Our curriculum coordinators was a difficult item to put on this list, whether it was option one or option two. It was a difficult decision to put them on, knowing how, how hard they have worked and how much they have benefited the school department and our teachers during our remote learning work. However, that is something that we listed, because we, we discussed the work, this work could be picked up by our principals and our assistant principals, knowing that our elementary schools, all but two, have full-time assistant principals and principals. So we would see going back probably to what it looked like when I was a principal, where I had a more active role in curriculum and instruction. My assistant principal had a more hands-on role with curriculum instruction, and that's how we would anticipate, you know, covering those needs or covering that work in our building. So again, very difficult. If there was one position that I would say we look at trying to maintain or hold on to, that would be one that I would advocate that we continue to hold on to, or find a way to continue funding, or maybe swap out with something on option two, to offset that cost. As I mentioned about the library supplies, the same rationale would apply to our library assistants with students not traveling to the classrooms, but to the libraries. Again, our instructional coaches, again, they do a lot of great work in our buildings. They support our principals and support our curriculum coordinators. Again, we feel that that would be work that could be picked up, or work that would be added to our principals and our assistant principals. And you did hear there in public input, something that would result in a two-point-four million dollar savings. And I, for one, intend to not take an increase next year. If I would advocate that we, do you authorize me or allow me to explore the possibility of working with our unions to discuss a salary freeze? So the FY twenty rates would be applied to FY twenty-one, and then the rates, or the compensation. Again, this is something that I would ask you to allow me to explore with our unions and the subcommittees to see if this is something that would be a viable option. If we, the two-point-four million dollars, I believe, equates to about forty staff members. So again, trying, knowing that we need people, or teachers in front of our students to provide instruction, losing forty teachers would, would be, you know, a difficult pill to swallow. Again, that, if that's something you wish for me to explore, that's something that my team, working with members of the subcommittees, can explore. We have a flow secretary who covers the high school offices and secretaries out on break or out on lunch. We have a TV studio assistant, the reason why this is on option two, because again, CBTE generates revenue for the district, so we listed that as an option two. Atlas houses our curriculum, but we have talked about migrating Atlas over to Google, to a Google platform that would cost, how unfortunately, COVID-nineteen took effect, and we could not do that, as Mrs. Bill Know was full throttle, working on our remote learning plan. But if that was something that we had to do, we could look into migrating Atlas onto a Google-supported platform. This one was difficult, knowing how busy the high school is. There are two, currently two secretaries in the main office, secretary at the high school. We refer to propose a reduction of one. We have three groundskeepers, and we know come wintertime, we really value our groundskeepers, and they do a great job keeping our grounds looking great year-round, not just during the winter. But we did for make the, we did look at it difficult, uh, look at it, yep, yes.
I, I'm sorry, I was trying to wait for you to get in between one, but I, I saw Mr. Martin with his hand up, and I didn't know if it was something urgent that he needed to say. You're still on mute, Mr. Martin.
If you could just go back to option one, John, and I've got my spreadsheet in front of me on paper. Can you just go through the list quickly? Identifying any item that is either not filled or does not have a salary associated with it. For example, you said the halftime art teacher was vacant. So any, any item in option one that does not have a person in it, or is not a salary position? If that makes sense.
So when you say not a salary position, you mean like a supply, right, Joe?
Right, supply or, like coaching for change, does that have salary?
Or a contract.
Or a contract.
Right, just making sure as business managers are on the same page, Joe, okay?
So just, just quickly.
Yeah, I'll go quick.
I just want to check them off on my list.
Yep, so art teacher vacant.
Yep.
Music teacher vacant.
I'm sorry.
Music teacher vacant.
Yep.
Task is a contract.
Library supplies.
Correct, yes, library supplies is not a salary, thank you, Joe. Coaching for change is a contract.
Yes.
Team chairs vacant.
Okay.
And then, everything else is, correct.
Deals with salaries, which deals with people.
Correct.
And I just want to make one more comment about, about that. From the, for the rest of my committee members and anyone who's listening, these figures you've put in under salaries, are these estimates or are they actual salaries?
We rounded, we rounded to the nearest dollar, so they are pretty accurate, but we did round them up.
Okay, well, just be, just be aware that anytime someone gets laid off, they're entitled to unemployment. So those salaries are not a full savings.
It'd be, that would be a charge we would see in an indirect cost on the net school spending.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Uh, where was I? So groundskeeper, yeah, groundskeeper, assistant payroll clerk. To, just using that rationale, that explanation from Mr. Martin, atlas is a contract. So after groundskeeper, assistant payroll clerk is currently not filled. That is a budgeted position for FY twenty that we were about to fill. We did have a recommendation, but I did not approve that recommendation as COVID-nineteen set in, so that is currently vacant. HR technology assistant was an item that we put in as a budget priority last year, that is currently vacant as well. We did, so that, that is, does not have a person assigned to that, so that could get moved over to option one. Custodian, based on our square footage criteria, we do have additional, an additional custodian at Friedman. And again, the rationale for the extra custodian at Friedman was due to all the use of facility that building sees at night and on weekends, so we thought that's why that position was always carried there. But knowing that things will look different for next year, we made the decision to cut that, to put that as a possible item two. But we're also cognizant of the fact that we need custodians to make sure our buildings are clean. So that was the one that we struggled with a bit, that's why it's listed in the option two. Information services and registrar, that is, there is a person in that position. And again, based on what we're seeing with the online registration, that would relieve some of that load, and we feel that that work could be picked up with a little restructuring within the IT office. The storekeeper position, we do have two, so that would be the reduction of one FTE. The assistant payroll, accounts payroll, there is a person in that position. The athletic trainer, this is the second athletic trainer that you budgeted for last year, so there is a person in that position. The director of grants, we have not filled, so that position is vacant. And we're looking at being creative, or maybe possibly sharing that position with another entity in the city, or maybe divvying up that work. Community facilitators, there are four FTEs in that position. The academic test, testing team, again, there are people associated with that position. The Tesla float assistance, there are twelve FTEs. Instructional coaches at the elementary school level, again, sorry, middle school level, similar to what we discussed on the elementary side. We did propose the possibility of closing one of our smaller elementary schools. So that would result in a savings of two-point-three million, almost two-point-four million dollars. And again, not knowing the uncertainty around athletics, if we were to eliminate athletics for the season, I'm sorry, for the school year, that would be a savings of about one-point-two million. And just for rough figures, each season costs us, or runs about four-hundred thousand per season. The fall season is the most expensive season. I'll be happy to entertain any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Keeping in mind, this is a presentation, I think I saw Mr. Souza and then Mr. Palowski. Mrs. Doherty. Okay, go ahead, and we'll get the hands later.
All right. Do I get one question, two questions, or just, are we going to go around, or?
We'll go around, yeah, good, good point, David. If everybody could try to limit it to one or two questions right now, we'll go around, so that everyone gets an opportunity, and so that everyone keeps in mind, you are going to be really discussing this next week. Thank you, Mrs. Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, I'm looking down, I got, I've got the narrative in front of me, so I'm trying to follow. All right, ready? Mr. Cabral, talk a minute about this school closure, because that's two-point-three, doesn't seem to be, is that salary, staff salaries that we're talking about? Because the building, you talked about potentially repurposing the building, so that three-point, that two, excuse me, two-point-three, that's salaries, and how are we going to, what are we gonna do with the students? The students are gonna be distributed to other classrooms and other buildings, and what, what was the?
Yes, that's a great question. So Mrs. Perry has done an analysis, and again, it's, it's, it's a rough analysis, and she's still working on it closely. But we would disperse the students at the elementary school over four schools. It could require some additional staffing, but not to the extent of staffing the school if it was closed. And we would have class sizes, except in, we would have class sizes up to Chamberlain, Mulcahy, Bennett, and Epo. We would have class sizes under twenty-five in all schools in all grades, except for two grades, which would be first grade and fourth grade at Chamberlain. Chamberlain is one of our largest schools, so if we did have to hire additional staffing, we're looking at maybe two or three teachers. But it would still be a substantial savings if we were to close the school and repurpose it down the road. Again, it is one of our smaller schools. We could absorb the students in other schools. And at the recent NASDAQ report, which I will provide you again, I think you received it sometime in March, the NASDAQ report that we received in March, and now, again, I'll share with you, does show a continuous trend of our enrollment decreasing into two thousand and twenty-four. So, and looking at the history of our enrollment, our enrollment has pretty much flatlined. Even though it did increase by fifty-some students this year, our enrollment has been pretty consistent between seven-eight-hundred and eighty-one-hundred students.
Did you say the report said it was going to increase?
Decrease, continued to decrease.
Yes, I believe in the decrease, yes, there's no question about that, yes, flatline.
That, that is, that is a trend that we would anticipate happening based on NASDAQ, and we get those reports every year, and they, they stay consistent.
Yep, follow-up question. On the Tesla floats, district-wide, for next week, could we have, is that all elementary? Is it middle school, is it high school? I'm assuming it's elementary school and maybe one.
Yeah, yeah, that applied, you, so the way to look at it, Mr. Souza, we have thirteen schools, all, every school we see- Also, every school we see one, except the alternative high school and the high school. So every middle school and elementary school, we see, uh, we see they float. I don't believe the high school received one.
That principal uses that as they see fit.
Correct. Well, technically they're supposed to cover assistants first, but if every assistant is in, they can be used for coverage in the classroom.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I'm going, I'm going to yield because I know other people have questions, so I'm good for now. Thank you.
I lost my screen for a second. Um, so Mr. Palowski, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'll, I'll do my best to be brief. Uh, I feel like I picked a bad time to join the school committee. This is not, not, not something I was looking forward to. I've really been looking forward to, uh, hearing about teaching and learning. And I feel like now the first time I'm hearing about it is when we get to talk about cutting it. So, but I'm, I'm glad I'm here to, uh, represent, uh, the parents of the city of Ton and the students of the city of Ton. So, um, I think we really need to look at this budget through the lens of what directly impacts teaching and learning. And, uh, what is critical to remote learning. I've read through the entire budget. Um, I have a million questions and I am going to probably save a lot of it for, for next week. I have spreadsheets and options too. But I've read through the entire budget and, um, I see a lot of things that are, are neither in option one nor two. That don't directly affect teaching and learning and are not as critical to remote learning. So I, I guess I want to know, um, who, who is it that was responsible for adding these items to the list? And deciding other items that wouldn't be on the list for us to choose from. And I think perhaps we need to take another look at some of these items and, uh, maybe get some more ideas in here. And, and maybe come up with some solutions that are outside of the box. You know, maybe restructuring things like, I, I think we need to be creative because, um, a, a, at the end of the day, like, I, I want to make sure that we are. Minimizing the, the actual human beings contact, uh, affected by these cuts. So I very much appreciate Mr. Martin's questions. Um, I, I'm very happy that we've identified which of these positions are vacant, which are, which are contracts. I mean, I, I would hope that we would, uh, move towards prioritizing, uh, cutting those positions, uh, before things that affect teaching and learning. And, and finally, all of these options, uh, what I'd like to know is, how do we know how effective these positions have been? Do we have assessments on these positions? Because I feel if, if this committee needs to decide what we keep and what we do not keep. I feel that we should definitely consider, uh, the performance of these positions and these, uh, programs, if you will. Uh, I think that's all I have to say at this time, so I will yield. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Mrs. Doherty.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just a few points for clarification. I, I just want to remind myself that one of our commitments, uh, is to provide social and emotional. Support for our most vulnerable students. And to address the needs of our EL students, our Spanish and Portuguese students and other, uh, second language learners. Also that we have made a commitment that after-school programs, and I understand COVID-19. But we have to talk about these programs in a way that expresses their importance to our students and families. And I, so I think, um, but the task program, for example, where we are mentoring young people who may not have an opportunity to be mentored elsewhere. A very beneficial program. Coaching for change, uh, is another where we have grown to servicing 220 middle school students on a. On an annual basis, plus teachers, high school teachers, college students, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that we need to make sure that we are looking, as Mrs., Mr. Palowski said, focused on teaching and learning. We also need to look at this conversation through the lens of supporting the social and emotional. Needs of our most vulnerable population of our at-risk students. To be sure that we are not removing the underpinnings of what it is that have brought them to school. And made them enjoy their experience there. So thank you for that. And just a question for clarification, team chairs, it says six. We had approved four. Is that an error?
That may be an error, Mrs. Uh.
So it's.
Dory, I'll, I'll, I'll confirm that in, for the meeting on Wednesday.
Great. And on coaching for change, the $240,000, remember sitting, uh, looking at that contract. So could you tell me what's in that $240,000? I think that's a little high.
A great question, Mrs. Doherty. So coaching for change, there are other costs associated with coaching for change. There's transportation for the late buses after school, which runs about 70,000. And then there's also the stipends or the hourly wages we pay our teachers who participate in the program. So the $140,000 contract is for the college mentors. And, uh, also the, the oversight that coaching for change provides, but then there were costs that we pick up while the students are on campus.
So it's the contract, the, uh, transportation cost, that's the, that's the piece that I forgot exists in, in the overall cost. So, uh, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, what?
And, and the stipends that the teachers receive.
Yes, the stipends at $26 an hour. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll have other questions and comments next, next week.
Thank you. Okay. Now, anyone else? Mr. DeBello, Mrs. Almeida, Mr. Martin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, very quickly through you, uh, to, uh, my colleague, Mr. Palowski. It is the right time to be on the school committee because this is where the tough get going. We, we put our, our, our minds together and make this all happen. And I totally agree that we do need to understand what is the benefit or the outcomes, uh, through the teaching, uh, teaching and learning part of what is affected. And, you know, just not cutting something for the benefit of cutting if it's really, the ROI in it is, is, is valuable to the district and our students. So, uh, that's all I wanted to say. And I just want to conclude that, uh, before we finalize. I, I really would like this preliminary budget to be on the school committee website, the 14-page document, PowerPoint that was, uh, shared tonight. If, if, if motion is necessary, I'll make it, but if it's not necessary, I, I would appreciate if we could put that up so that. The public does have full access, at least on the school committee website, of the preliminary, uh, FY21 budget presentation that was shared tonight.
Yeah. Wendy, uh, I believe Wendy does put the packet up on the website under the school committee, uh, page. But we can make, I think we might need to create a link so it's easier to find this.
Yeah, I, I think that's what I would request is the link, uh, like we do have now. If you scroll down, there's the FY20 budget and this would be the preliminary budgets accessible. Instead of going through all the rigmarole of looking at the agendas and so forth, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Martin seems to have something pressing.
Can, can I respond to Mr. DeMello's, uh, request?
Sure.
Not only would I ask, not only would I agree with him about putting the entire budget, but I would also like to see just the, uh. Basically maybe a little cover letter and this page that we're looking at on reallocation options. So that the public doesn't necessarily have to go through 14 pages of line by line. But look and see what the impact of us cutting is going to have on the school system with what's being considered. So they wouldn't have to go through all the weeds. They could just look at those two options and get a real quick analysis of what is on the table. For potential reductions.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, because I just want to state that that's actually one of the letters I've been working on this week. Is a, uh, similar to what Mayor O'Connell presented during her budget meeting. Was a, a, a letter describing, discussing the impact and the uncertainty around the FY21 budget. So I, I was working on that and that'll be, uh, added after we add this presentation to our website. Uh, I plan on hopefully having that ready tomorrow.
Thank you. Mrs. Almeida.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had discussed the budget in length with Mr. Cabral and, um. I, I would ask, Mr. Cabral, the items that we had discussed, if, I don't want to go into all kinds of. Scenarios because of the fact that we're not supposed to be discussing the budget tonight. But I would very much appreciate the scenarios that we kind of talked about. If you could come up with some dollar figures on those so we can really discuss those next week.
Yeah. And just for the committee to understand, um, similar to, and I agree with Mr. Palowski. And I think what Mrs. Almeida and I discussed was very similar to what Mr. Palowski discussed. Is there a way to be creative to look at these positions differently? Maybe is there a way to combine? Is there a way to change, um, what they're doing or what some of these positions do during the day to minimize the impact? As we said, on, on our human capital, which is very valuable, human capital. So, uh, those are some of the discussions that we had and that's materials that I'll prepare and share with everyone, uh, for the upcoming meeting.
I mean, I don't particularly want to go into detail of, of those items, but there are things that. Will make this a little bit simpler, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Um, Mr. Martin, I had you down. Are you all set?
I just have a couple of quick comments. Number one, just going back to what I asked Mr. Cabral to do with option one and option two that did not involve a, uh, an individual. That comes out to just over a million dollars total. The other comment I wanted to make was, uh, and this is a question for Mr. Cabral and Ms. Monahan. The instructional coaches, the salaries that are given, uh, are those the current instructional coaches, both at the elementary and middle school?
Yes.
Because those people are not going to be laid off. The, they would go back into the classroom and the person that's in the classroom currently would be the one that's laid off. So that's kind of an inflated figure. So I think it'd be more accurate if, if we were to see who potentially, who would, uh, who would be, uh. Making up that figure based on their salary rather than the salary of the current person who's an instructional coach. Just, just for a point of information, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I'll set. Mrs. Al, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mrs. Almeida, uh, well, I, I think Mrs. Almeida has a comment on this, and then I'll get you, Mrs. Fagan. I'm sorry.
Thank you. But Mr. Martin, uh, Mr. Martin. Mr. Cabral, didn't we, I'm so used to talking to Joe about the budget. Mr. Cabral, didn't we? Do layoffs to non-professional staff?
So what, what, Mrs., and she's on the call, so Marguerite, feel free to jump in if I misrepresent what we've done already. So teachers who were hired to work prison and anyone who was hired mid-year. Did receive a letter back in May, I believe. So there were about 75 to 80 letters that were distributed, that were sent out to those individuals. We have not acted on those positions until we know what our budget is. But again, depending on what the budget is and depending what, what the outcome is next week. We may have to send out additional letters or additional non-renewal letters, uh, to our employees. Marguerite, feel free to jump in if I stated anything incorrectly.
If in fact, we have to do any of the scenarios in this reallocation options. It's pretty. Accurate to say that these positions would have jobs for next year because of the fact of the amount. Of openings that we have at this time.
I, 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 I wouldn't feel comfortable committing to saying that all the positions would be filled. For example, if we did close a school, uh, that, that might result in some. Of our employees not having a position. For the most part, we believe that we would be able to bring most of our employees back.
Okay. I'm talking about option one, basically.
I'm sorry. You all set, Mrs. Almeida?
On that, on Mrs. Almeida's.
Just a minute, just a minute. Mr. Cabral, will you be discussing this on when, next Wednesday, all of these things that are being discussed right now?
Yes.
I just want to remind the school committee of that. Um, so, I'm sorry. Mr. Martin, did you have something? Because Mrs. Fagan's been waiting.
How many people are retiring this year?
I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I do know the savings off the top of my head, Mr. Martin. So the retiree savings is 244,000.
I'm just looking at positions.
Mrs. Fagan.
I don't know the, I don't know the actual FTE. I just know the savings.
Okay.
Mrs. Fagan has been waiting very patiently.
That's a virtue, Mayor O'Connell. I'm trying. Um, Mr. Cabral, what I'm concerned about with, with some of this stuff is there are some positions that, as. I, like other people, have gotten phone calls. Some of the people that do community outreach. Uh, I, I have, I have a problem with letting some of them go because they really do. A great job in connecting with the students, so that to me is important. But what's difficult about all this is if, if we're forced into a situation, if we can't come back. And we start to have to do extraordinary measures to keep this social distancing with our students. We actually probably are going to need more bodies in a classroom, right? So because somebody's got to watch all these kids or what, we don't even have a plan for that yet. So this is kind of all predicated on the direction that people want to take as far as going back into the schools. Am I right?
Uh, so we will, we will need bodies in the classroom, so you're correct. We, and again, but those bodies are teachers. We will need teachers in our classrooms, uh, working with our teachers, working with our students. And again, we do have our educational assistants that are in our schools. So, um, our, yes, we need as many people in the building working with our kids and, um, supporting them and supporting their families.
And anything that has a bus attached to it, like some of the after-school programs. We're looking at the fact that those, those costs could escalate quite a bit too, if they start recommending the every other seat and, and all that things too, right? So that's, that's another thing we have to factor in, what the cost will be at the end of it also, right?
Correct. Those are all factors we need to weigh in on.
And I can wait till next week to discuss the rest, but thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Okay, are we all, uh, Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, I'm at the end here, so that's the, the reason I'm at, I wanted to come in at the end here is. So, Mr. Cabral, what, what is the process between now and next week? And, uh, what is your thoughts about how we're going to get to the finish line next, uh, week?
Yeah, what, what would be helpful for us would be to, and again, I think part of the work we'll do next week would be to come to consensus. We need to come to the consensus on what are the items that we can all agree upon that, uh, we would have to reduce or reallocate. So it would be helpful for me and our team to know, uh, what are the priorities of the school committee? What are those, you know, what are those must-haves? What are those needs that we need to have? So if you could provide me with that information, uh, between now and Friday. That'll allow the team an opportunity to see where there are similarities and where there are differences and try to rank order what those priorities are. So if you could provide me with your rank order of, you know, what are your top 10, top 15 items that you feel we have to have? And what are those items? Again, difficult work, knowing, uh, what we've just gone through in this short time. What are those items that you feel we should, you know, hold off or reallocate? That would be very helpful to the team in coming back to Wednesday and sharing the information with you, saying this is what the majority of you agreed on. That we should keep and this is what the majority of you agreed that we, you know, may be able to reallocate for the upcoming year.
So you'll send us a note on that about what you want for the, you know, what, what column, what the narrative is.
I'll work with Wendy to send the template.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I would also add, as Mr. Palowski mentioned, I would also add a third column. As again, this is a work that we did with our leadership team. This is work that we did with our principals on several meetings. So if there's something that we haven't thought of, by all means, uh, we want to hear about it. And it would be helpful to hear about something prior to Wednesday so that we can do the work to look into the cost.
Thank you. Okay. Um, Mr. Martin.
Do you need a?
I'll begin then, Mrs. Doherty.
Cabral, regarding meeting with the unions.
Was that for, was that for me, Mr. Martin? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You need a motion to meet with the unions.
That, if that's something that you wish for me to explore, a motion would be appropriate.
Now make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Um, broke up, uh, on discussion. Mr. Souza, Mr. DeBello.
So the, the only, the question that I have is, I think it's the obvious question. And that is negotiations with any union, we've got six of them, take time, time and more time. And although I think it's an admirable thing to do. Mr. Cabral, when did you expect us to make a final decision? Mr. Cabral, when did you expect us to make a final decision on the 3.8, which would be next Wednesday? Is that right?
Ideally, if by next Wednesday, because again, if we can't, we have contractual language. We need to notify employees before June 15th.
Realistically, you'd have to negotiate with each, each bargaining unit would have to negotiate with each unit. Multiple meetings, this could drag until September.
Well, I think if Mr. Cabral wants, you know, the permission to do that, you just give it to him and he can deal with it, how he's going to deal with it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
The other thing to keep in mind too is if it's something that does take a little longer to negotiate, it would mean that we would bring those positions back sooner.
On the motion, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. DeMello had something first unless he wants to defer, and then I have you down.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So the motion on the floor is to allow discussion regarding salaries with the unions? What's the motion for? I'm sorry.
The motion that was asked for was to allow Mr. Cabral to explore salary freeze. If, Mr. Martin, is that your intention?
I would say the motion is that he can meet with the unions to see if they have any contribution to this in any form. There were any suggestions.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. Mrs. Doherty?
Oh yeah, just quickly, Madam Mayor, thank you. I don't, I don't believe that the superintendent has to have the school committee's permission to meet with the union over these critical issues. You're not having a conversation about their thoughts. But more importantly, we have not made any decisions about the direction that we want to go in in terms of any, any of these cuts. So it, I think you can have a casual conversation, but you are not going to go over with the union point by point, their opinion about some of these issues because we haven't made any decisions. I think once we make our decisions in terms of the direction that we need to go, those are the things that you would be bargaining over, negotiating over, discussing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
So just, just for clarification on my point, this is something that me, myself and the administration will reach out to the collective bargaining units, but this will not involve the subcommittees at this point. Is that correct, Mr. Susan, Mr. Martin? Was that the intent of the motion, not to involve the subcommittees?
Just testing the waters.
Okay, just want to be clear.
Okay, Mrs. Almeida?
So I just want to be clear on this. You want to talk to the unions about not taking any increases for next year, is that correct?
Correct.
I can't support that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, are we ready to vote? Mrs. Fagan, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Doherty?
I'm very befuddled about this. I'm going to pass for the moment.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
No.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
I get, are you keeping track of that? Do you need to vote on that, Mayor O'Connell?
I do not. We have five.
Okay.
So the motion passes. Okay, all set. Thank you.
No, you don't have five.
Okay, I don't?
It's already passed.
One, two, three, four, five.
You have two passes.
I have five.
I put down.
One opposed.
Oh, I put down Palowski, Fiore, Fagan, DeSouza. I do have an extra, yeah, okay. Three, four. We do have four.
So you have to vote, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Almeida, for picking that up.
No problem.
Okay. Are we all set there? Are we ready to move on to administrative business? Staffing reports.
Getting placed on file.
Second.
Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Yep. Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports. Finance and Law Subcommittee, 6320, Mr. Martin?
Finance and Law Subcommittee met earlier this evening with myself, Mr. Fiore, Mr. Souza. Also in attendance were Ms. Monahan and Mr. Cabral. And we had three items on the agenda this evening. The first one was student activity requests. There weren't any. The second one was bills payable in the amount of $401,239.62. And the third one was a quick facilities update from Ms. Monahan. As of, I guess, what was it, yesterday, Mulcahy School's been turned over to the contractor and she wanted to thank all of the people who had applied a lot of effort into emptying that building and cleaning it out and getting it ready for the contractor. And that's the report of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Souza?
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on discussion. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the committee, I had forgotten that there were some invoices from the Old County History Museum and I need to be recorded as present on those because I'm an officer.
Thank you. Mrs. Fagan?
Yes, I'd like to just vote present on one of the, if you could add that to your motion, David?
Yes.
To vote present on page three, invoice number 16958.
Do you make sure in the Finance and Law Subcommittee that Jody's motion on the warrant is present? Because that would be the same deal.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So correct the roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan?
Mrs. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes, as presented.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes. Unit A Teacher Subcommittee, 52920, Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Unit A Subcommittee met with, it was a Labor Management Subcommittee and it was myself, Mrs. Fagan, Mrs. Almeida, Superintendent Cabral, Mr. Barana and other members of the leadership team. And there was a few issues discussed. Things are going much, much better. And it was three, basically three items. The level of student engagement, there was a lot of discussion on that and the teachers had questions. So that was one of the items. Remote learning grading and the superintendent and the, Mr. Barana and the leadership team talked about that. So there were some clarifications on that, so they were happy with that. And then the final item was the task force engagement of which Unit A members or the TEA members would like to be on certain, certain subcommittees of the task force of the six items. And that is the report of the Unit A Subcommittee.
We have a motion.
Receive the report of the Subcommittee and place on file.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan?
Yes. Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Oh, Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any new business? Seeing none. Unfinished business. Action item review?
Colleagues, I don't see any removal of any of those items. If anyone has anything, just let me know, but I don't see any right now.
Okay, so can we just move on from that then? Okay, great. Okay, critical items not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours in advance. Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess just one last question. So if we're meant to make a final decision on this budget by next week's meeting, is there any avenue for Mr. Cabral to get any additional opinions from his, you know, leadership team? Anybody that come up, will a larger group of opinions to add additional items that are not currently in option one and option two?
Can you clarify larger group, please, Mr. Palowski? Are you referencing Unit B members, community, parents? What do you mean by larger?
I guess, I guess I'm, I guess I'm open to anything. I just, you know, like, we're meant to choose from this limited list. And I guess I don't know if we, I don't know if we all know what we don't know. I don't know if there's other things that could be considered. So I just want to know if between now and next week, all we have is exactly what's in front of us. I just want to know, is there any additional avenue for you to get further input? And I guess it could be from any source.
So when you ask me to, so by authorizing me to meet with our unions or to have those conversations with our unions, I will ask them for input and that will come right from the sources who will be impacted the most.
Okay, thank you.
Would that suffice, Mr. Palowski?
I believe so.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Souza?
Thank you. One final question, Mr. Cabral. Could you just go over the input process on all these selections? In other words, there was the leadership team, did you say principals? Could you just go over how you gathered all the input on those, please?
So leadership team met several times. Again, going as far back is when we knew that there was going to be a shortfall and even during our budget planning, we wanted to anticipate if there was a shortfall, what would be some items that we would typically look at during the budget review process. But that obviously that escalated due to COVID-19 and the shortfall. I want to say we had at least two or three Zoom meetings with our principals where they worked in breakout rooms via Zoom under the direction of the leadership team to identify the items and then also to rank order the items. And then they were turned over to the administration and then we rank ordered them based on the different groups and how they prioritize them. Again, similar to what I'm asking you to do, looking for commonalities. So again, it's, it's during this remote process, it's not ideal. You know, I prefer to work face to face in person with all of you with my chop paper, my markers and my PowerPoints. But under the conditions, I believe that was a good process. And again, there was a lot of consistency. But if there are other items that you wish for us to explore, by all means, please let us know. I know you rely heavily on us to do that work, but I would welcome your input as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I yield.
Thank you. Mrs. Doherty, did you have a question or a comment?
I would, if you might, thank you, Madam Mayor. If the superintendent would restate the total amount of money that he wishes to have saved to balance his budget or to make a good budget.
That's a, that's a great question.
How much money?
That's a great question. Again, I tend to be a little conservative with this. And as I mentioned during the PowerPoint presentation, there's still a lot of uncertainty with our revenue projections. Circuit breaker could be reduced more than 20%. So I would say go a little higher than $4 million, so maybe 4.3, 4.5, just to provide us with a buffer. And then again, it also allows me, allows the administration with the opportunity to find those commonalities. Because we may be able to find more items that you come to a consensus with.
So as we make our own list, we are shooting for the 4.5 million. So each of us might have a different list that would equal that amount of money. Is that your?
And hopefully, and then I would hope that when I stop putting all those items that there's consensus on, right? So if they say there's like 10 items and it equals $4 million, then maybe we just need to work as a group to figure out where we would get another $500,000.
I think that in terms of the school closing, that the impact of that, and it's multifaceted, needs to be brought to the table as well. We hadn't discussed that at all. And I think that if this committee doesn't feel that it's a consideration at all, we need to say that before we, before we even look at that particular action. I for one don't support that, but nonetheless. The other thing is in the organization of the material that you give us, what do you have in mind? Is it like vacancies, non-renewals, retirees, people who are on this list that might have bumping rights? We need to know where these people would be, not who they are specifically, but in broad numbers, how many positions would be vacant after the bumping occurs? Are you going to help us with that?
Yes, sir. Based on the information I'm receiving today, I will review the minutes and make sure that all the items that you discussed is incorporated into the packet you receive.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, any other items, Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think that what Mr. Cabral did with the two scenarios isn't anything different than I have seen in the last 30 years. And Mr. Martin can attest to that. We used to do that the same way. It's up to the committee to decide which items on that list go and which items stay. I think that him and his, you know, team have done a wonderful job and I know that the principals worked out on this also. We haven't, our process is to do this and then we take it out and we bring it to the community. We have to do the public hearings. So it's our job now to make the hard decisions. It's not up to other people to make the decisions for us. That's what we're elected for. So I don't want to labor this any longer and I look forward to any discussions that we have next week on the budget. But I want to thank Mr. Cabral and his team for the hard work and the principals for what they did to come up with these ideas for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Anybody else? Okay, on to Kay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan?
Certainly. Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Okay. Good night, everybody.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Great job, everyone.
Best wishes to Representative Doherty.
Oh, yeah. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Carol.
Congratulations, Carol.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Carol. Appreciate that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.